I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, all.
Morning.
Good morning.
I see Ben's just walking in, but his, uh, down here at the bottom for his... He wants to table that for a week.
Table, uh, Ben's down at the bottom.
Yep.
Okay, table that for a week.
So...
Oh, just a second. Um, can I make a mention of tabling for a week? We do have a meeting next week, right?
Yeah.
For, uh, what if we... Oh, about hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's something else we were gonna maybe touch base with the zoning or somebody.
That's where we're hearing.
Is that applicable, Ben, because we are actually having a meeting? I know we're gonna keep it short and sweet.
Well, I'm assuming what information he'll get, he's probably gonna forward to us.
Okay, and he'll put that back on.
I'm assuming, isn't it...
Ben, we were... Hey, Ben.
Ben, would you look for...
You don't accept by that guy.
The guy is disrupting the meeting. The sheriff's disrupting the meeting.
Yes, we, uh, wanted to let you know that you have the day off a week from now. I think. Courthouse is closed, but we're having a meeting.
Yes, correct.
I don't... I don't know if you... Maybe you don't have that day off, but I'm assuming you do. Because you wanted to table your...
Yes.
A week for today for... We are gonna meet because we have a hearing on a blog site. But just wanted to give you a heads up in case you have... You are gonna be at work for a week. Wow. But just so you know, to get up and say, "Oh, sure, I really didn't have to be at work today." Is that fine to be on next week's...
Later.
Uh, shortly after. Yeah, eight thirty, I think, is our meeting.
Yeah, we could put you on early so you don't have to listen to the zoning stuff if you don't want to.
Just wanted to give you a heads up, 'cause you might say...
I know.
Okay. You might say, "What did my... Get myself into... Aren't I supposed to be here today?"
All right.
So we'll put it for next week, then.
We'll do that.
Just wanted to double check.
So with that, we'll amend the agenda to table that till next week, so with that, we need a motion to approve it.
Do you wanna make that? I'll make the motion with the amended amendment, the move that to next week to approve the agenda.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. The minutes for the seven?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Claims. Wow.
All right. Well, I looked through the claims. I've got general three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. And drainage of a hundred...
I got more than that.
Did I get something, miss something?
I got five hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine eighty-eight cents. Did I look at it wrong?
Yeah. You didn't... You didn't come down to the handwritten, right?
Oh, sorry.
You did miss something.
I did miss it.
So five hundred was your number?
Five hundred thousand, six hundred... Five hundred, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eighty-eight cents.
Okay.
And the drainage was eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine and thirty-four cents.
Yep. Those are the numbers in the book. So we have a motion. Do we get a second?
I will second.
In a second. Any other discussion on the claims? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We approve the claims.
Ben, you pull the cord, please. Thanks.
All right.
You, Ben? Probably. Hmm, maybe.
Pass that into the ladies. There's a fairly full pile there. Any public concerns speak now. Looks like we're good. Are you here for... Okay. I thought that's what we're... All right. I guess now we have, uh, Ryan is here, a discussion on, uh, possible IT position. Wanna come up and get closer to the mic, so...
You wanna just take that center mic and spin it around, and that way they'll hear you better.
Morning.
So I wanted to stop and talk about the possibility of, with, I understand, the IT position that you have been, uh, looking at switching to for the county, over having, uh, different providers, uh, take care of different entities. Um, I wonder if those, uh, computer works would be interested in taking and doing the entire IT solution for the county. We currently take care of the sheriff's department, the nine-one-one, the engineers, the Humboldt Law Enforcement Center. With this, you know, I think that we can save a lot of money as far as with the, you know, you wouldn't necessarily have the benefits packages and stuff like that. We were not yet able to exactly come up with a cost, as we weren't sure with the city and, uh, police office. I had understood that we had... You had looked at combining their IT services in with the county. So until we would know that and the numbers with that, on how you would necessarily either divide that up as cost-wise, um...
Yeah, it's kind of a tough area to get figured out. It's basically between the police department. The city, yeah, just the police department part.
It would just be the police department?
Yeah, the computers and the alley street.
Okay. So the city would actually keep the city offices separate?
Yeah, and keep their patrol cars separate.
But, but as the discussion went from our IT folks, uh, some other counties that have a full-time IT person, uh, they will do work for the police, but that is separate. Yeah, that's dependent upon, yeah. Basically, they're gonna pay them. They're not gonna be getting their... That portion from the county.
The police have twenty-year agreements, and then they figure out...
Sometimes as a percentage, yeah, but they'll say, "We use this much of their service," but then they do pay.
Yeah.
Or they just do it separately. One or the other, it is segregated though, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
The computers and ITs, um, needed in the building, that does tie in with the patrol cars.
Yeah.
With the...
That's what they're... They probably still use the same, whatever it is, use that same service, but it'll be built separately.
Built separately.
Patrol or something like that, you know?
So with that, I would... It's in figuring out the cost or whatever, we just have to put together an amount of computers. But it sounds like, other than the courthouse, is something that we already provide services for. Um, so it'd just be a matter of if you wanted to take and create like a service price with this, you know, with a certain amount of hours, that we'd figure out how many hours that you feel that we would need to provide this.
You guys do the work on, uh, the cameras and stuff in the jail and in the SBD you're currently doing, is that right, Dean?
Yes.
And the patrol cars and that type of stuff, they do that work for us.
The installation of some of the cameras in the cars is done with... The purchase of, uh, the cameras and software is from another vendor.
Yeah.
And I believe that it's, uh, we actually put installation in the car.
We use, uh, Iowa Mercury, so I'll... And I think the city's been using Carl Chevrolet.
So they'll actually install them, and then we do, um, work with them with the configuration. Possibly when the car pulls up to the building, that it automatically uploads into the server, where they can access it from their computer.
Well, we've been... Sorry, we've been dealing with, uh, the IT's people from what, the suits and... Right? What's the other...
It's kind of a whole group.
Yeah, they have a group.
Some from other, like, counties, but the ICIP.
Right.
Organization, yeah. Yeah, organization, and it's been... They've been very helpful to provide us with information.
And they've also told us that they would help, um, in the hiring of the people that we would be looking to hire, because they know more... They have more knowledge of what they're doing in other counties. And for us to sit and interview someone, I don't have...
Bruce, yeah, along those lines, as we've talked and Mo had mentioned to us, like the job description, where this is, you know, put out there. I mean, uh, and you're obviously more than welcome to, you know, work with. But, yeah, Bruce makes a good point. That's where they've been really helpful, providing that information that we do need, and then, you know, we give to the person that we're hiring, so...
The job description for us for the meeting within the courthouse and the police, our sheriff's department.
Good.
So as soon as they... As soon as we get our ducks in a row, as far as what we're looking for and what we're... 'Cause we've had other people that have expressed interest, so, um, we're looking. We're still trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. I mean, it's something that we haven't budgeted for ever, so we have to put that into the budget and make that come together. So that's another piece of the puzzle that we're trying to figure out, too, so...
Good.
I'd like to say that we are working on it, like, we work to get what the folks, to get the construction, to get this out there, because we've had the discussion, I know, uh, this is the direction that we need to go. It's not that we want, but we need in this day and age, so you come in and, you know, with your... At the appropriate time, so we appreciate that.
And whether it's an individual or a company, it really doesn't matter to us. But we just need somebody that's gonna be here, and our stuff is top priority. You know, that's the... That's the bigger thing.
And that is one benefit by us, is we have multiple people that can back each other up. So if one is gone, one is on vacation, something of the sort, or if there's, you know, dire need at the courthouse, and also at the police station at the same time, we have multiple people in town that are... Are able to take care of more than one fire at a time. And we... We install software that does, um, remote management, where we can, uh, monitor PCs, their updates, patches, install them, without going to each computer to do it. We can monitor them all, monitor backups, firewalls, which saves a lot of time.
You feel you're fairly strong in cybersecurity, 'cause that's a huge thing right now, too.
Yeah, with the... With firewalls and everything, I'm very fluent, installing them, maintaining them, monitoring them. Our software also does monitoring for firewall, for firewall. Keep the safest and most secure environment.
Well, I really feel stupid asking this, but this is one of the questions. Do you guys do phishing?
Phishing?
Yeah. Well, that was one of the things they talked about when they did their... Their presentation to us, that making sure that they do phishing for people that are here that... You know me, I sit on my phone and I see somebody send me an email, I go, "I gotta find out who that is." Well, that's the no-no.
In the... In the Microsoft three sixty-five, we can set up so that it does monitor for people that are accessing that email inappropriately with that.
Well, that was the... One of the number-one things that they had mentioned, that certain people in certain offices, they... And I'm not talking here, places that they're already at, but notoriously, one guy will constantly click on that to say, "Boom. I didn't know."
Yeah, we do... We do, uh, spam filtering and everything that monitors for emails that are being sent in here with those capabilities of phishing emails, containing viruses, malware, stuff like that.
How comfortable would you be with training, with talking to people about training, with all the employees, too, on, you know, what to click, what not to click? You know, what... You know, there's training, all the people, training, too.
Um, we do have and have had, uh, training out in the public and stuff. Um, we would just gear it, um, training, and maybe have sessions, um, for users here in courthouse, police station, on different various, uh, parts of email and security of the training, you know, of the email, or of, um, computers, you know, monitoring, making sure that they're taking care of their computer and stuff like that.
Well, I think that's why we're leaning on them so hard, because they have a lot more knowledge than us. And I guess, uh, they... They gave a presentation to us and showed us some things that we need to improve on, and I guess we've entered into a... An agreement to have them help us outline it, and then we'll set it up to see who we're looking, and they've also said they would help with the interview process. So that's where we're at. We're just kinda walking, 'cause none of us are very...
We are ID people, sadly.
We'll be involved with the interview process, but there's, uh, the technical...
And I just got a question for the board here. During this interview process, should his company be interviewed? 'Cause you're... What, I'm gonna be interviewing individuals?
Correct.
I'd...
Well, I think that's a good comparison. I think that's a good question, and I'm glad that you bring it up, that we're in the process to ask, uh, the folks, the, the IT group. It's a group that's statewide, and then, you know, obviously, we work a little closer around counties, if they can show up and work with us. But I think that's a good question to ask them.
Yeah, because we wanna do it the best we can for the least amount of money.
Yeah.
You know, and if you don't, well, the curve's gonna bend, you know?
Right.
And I mean, they... Their group is statewide, so they have vast difference, you know, they have a lot of, you know, different scenarios and information. I think that's a question posed to ICIP groups.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll just have to see, but we do know, I don't think there's any doubt, that we want... We're moving forward with it.
Right, yeah.
We're gonna get our IT system, person, competence.
Something, yeah.
Something different than we have now, 'cause it's, uh, too fragmented. That's why people have IT. That's why companies and counties and that have IT departments, so that's where we're headed. But we will ask our question.
Yeah, next time we talk, we'll ask that question.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
I can get back with you, and...
All righty.
Very good.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anything else? I don't wanna cut you short. Do you have anything else for us?
No, I think that's good.
Excellent.
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Ben, before I walk up, just that book I got for you the other day?
Uh-huh. Do they have, uh, pricing on any other stuff?
Uh, the guy's on the front there, he said he would... I gave him your name, and you were the signing buyer, and he was all for... He said he would be in touch with us, so...
Super nice guy. I mean, I would recommend you touch base with him.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, like I mentioned to Bruce, I mean, when it comes to ordering, we always train with that.
Signs...
Best bang for the buck.
Signs look nice. You can read through it. It's a nice book. If you like, you can have one.
In the past, we've always ordered from Iowa Prison Industries, but I know, uh, the... Due to the violence last summer, they shut down a lot of their extra programs for a number of months. And we ended up ordering from another company, but I wanna say that was from South Dakota, not North Dakota.
Yeah, okay, well, it... It looks like a good viable option to touch base into.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the discussion and possible action on the compensation board's recommendation. As we know, the compensation board's, uh, numbers when they met and came back to us was eighteen and... Right?
Yep, eighteen and, um, six.
And six. That was their kinda recommendation. And I guess, after our meeting down, um, Thursday at Des Moines, we know that every county in the state is struggling with, I guess, some of them are a lot higher than... What was the gentleman that we were on the elevator with?
Forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent, almost fifty percent. And quite frankly, they didn't have a clue how they were gonna try to make that work, so I guess, um, I don't know if any of you read the... Mess... Or the Des Moines paper on Friday, but there's a huge article in here on, uh, on that, and, um, talks in great detail about it. So I guess I'm... We're looking for what your thoughts are.
Well, that was a good... Well, I'm sure we'll discuss it on committee reports, but it was a good, uh, good day of meetings, um, down there, and Bruce touched on it, but, you know, we didn't talk to every last county representative on the meetings, but the ones that we worked with, they are all over the place. They are all over the place, and, uh, not that your other counties didn't tell, mention any counties, but, you know, there's some that are way low, and some are way high, and they're in between.
Yeah.
It is not a... An across-the-board, across-state situation of everybody gave, "Oh, this is what we did." You know, everyone looked at it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to say we did learn that.
From... I... I think the fact that Blue Bill got it wrong. They threw all their money at administration rather than the employees, the people that are doing the work out there. Not that our sheriff doesn't patrol, 'cause he does, but I know in a lot of cities, there's a... It's a best job.
Right.
Um, and it seems like politicians seem to screw it up a lot.
And I don't think any of us are against the bill. I just think that some of the ways that they have went about this, um, like you said, we would prefer they would do something to try to help on the bottom side, too.
Well, they didn't look at counties as a whole. They just took the...
Took the big trash.
They took the metropolitan areas and said that everybody needs to compile that. When you're looking at rural Iowa...
It's a whole different ballgame.
It is. Our needs are totally different. We don't have murders every day. We don't have high crime. You know, we're mostly a county of older, you know...
You were... I was trying to say, mature, retired.
These are mature, Teddy. That's a good one.
I said, I like mature, but anyway, you know, so it's a totally different thing than going to Pope County or...
Well, it is. That's one...
Glory or, you know...
Definitely, yeah. And I mean, the premise is definitely correct, but the broad blanket put out there is not. And I think, uh, there is information put out, you know, I believe most all counties do have compensation boards, and obviously, they're all different, uh, their interpretation is different, uh, you know, how they come up with the numbers. There is a lot of... A lot of numbers for compensation boards, which bear in mind, he's like a year.
Right.
And, uh, obviously...
And the volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they... They do not work with the budgets like we do. They do not, you know, they... They... And I think it... It scared them, to be honest with you. I really do. These huge numbers that came out, but I think that they... They were frightened, and they didn't know really where to go and how to do it.
Well, we appreciate the work they do, 'cause it's all volunteer, you know, and responsibility. It weighs heavily. It impacts the budget, and it's something that we all need to, you know, think about and consider.
Well, this article, there's the... The phrase in there, it says, "In setting the salary of the county sheriff and the county compensation board shall consider setting the sheriff's salary so that it is comparable to salaries of other professional law enforcement administrators and command officers of the state patrol." So anyway...
Well, I might make a motion to cut the compensation board's recommendation by fifty percent. I don't like doing it, 'cause it hurts our elected officials, but I think it just gets too much of a separation between administration and staff that works there. So that's... That's my motion.
For the sake of discussion, I'm gonna second Rick's motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to, uh, cut the compensation boards.
We have a discussion.
We will.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, but I wanna make one first, 'cause I feel Dave's presence sitting next to me.
As, uh...
He would say, "Do I have a second to discuss?"
As we get it, we're... Then we can talk till... Hopefully not till tonight.
No, let's not talk all day.
Uh, all in favor of that?
Well, that's why I said... I said, for the sake of discussion...
We have a motion in a second. Now we can talk.
Bingo. That's why I said, I feel my counterpart, and our counterpart Dave, sitting here telling me that, so...
Before we make any decisions, I think we need to see how this is gonna impact the budget. Now, we've talked about forty, we've talked about forty-three, we've talked about fifty.
But it... It isn't so much to me the dollars of the sheriff's salary, 'cause it's... If you went from eighteen to, uh, nine, it's probably five thousand dollars. And a little... A couple more for a couple of deputies, so it's probably less than ten thousand dollars total, maybe twelve. I don't know, I just got all of the numbers out of my hat here. But, so, it ain't like it's a huge amount, but I... I would feel like I would need to give the deputies something comparable, 'cause they're the ones doing the work. And that is where you get into the issue of a lot of money.
Well, it... It does, though, because the deputies get a certain percentage of your wage.
No.
Only two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, it used to be that way.
Okay, but the negotiations are coming up, their wages, the other ones, isn't that this year?
Yes.
That's coming up. So, I understand where you're coming from, Rick, with the fifty percent going from nine to thirty. The three percent is what we did last year, overall, for elected officials.
Yeah.
And everybody, um, inflation has increased so much this year, so I... I would feel for the other elected officials, that they're not gonna be able to take advantage of some kind of a better increase for it to take over this inflation. That's my thought.
Like you mentioned, it is correct. I mean, there again, not the site, but other counties, we heard, 'cause you talked to other supervisors, and they essentially assume both that we are, and, uh, this will be vastly different. I talked to one supervisor, she happened to be a woman, I won't mention the county she's from, but, uh, she would have voted to give the supervisor zero and cut the bare lowest recommendation from the compensation board down, but they did stick with low... It was low, they were only three percent, and she said it just... She looked very fiscally conservatively on the budget, and that was her argument, her information to me. So, yeah, it's... It's not necessarily, uh, fair, but it may be correct, as Rick stated.
Well, it's... It's something I've thought, put a lot of thought into it. You know, we've had lots... Lots of conversations, and I've, um... And I know also our elected officials are sitting in here, some of them. And, um, I... I don't think it's fair to cut their salaries because of what... What we gotta do. But sometimes you make hard decisions and... And, um... Maybe you have other options, Sandy or...
Back then, in our... Our work sessions, we talked about if we went to forty percent, um, down, it would be ten, ten point eight percent, and then three point six, or if we, um, not, I'm sorry, it'd be sixty, total sixty percent, I would cut it by forty. But if we cut it by thirty-three percent, then it would be twelve point oh six and four point oh two percent. We've been kinda batting those in our work sessions, those figures, so, um... I would... I would like to see either... Either the... To either the cut it by forty or cut it by thirty-three percent personally. I just think that, um... I just think that, um, we need to give them a little bit more compensation on the, um, elected officials. I think we also need to work on the hourly raise of the jailers, um, dispatch.
Or, or their starting pay.
The, the support staff, yep, the starting pay and the support staff and how we can get them up to a more, you know, you can, they're just advertising on, uh, hot line, they're starting at eighteen dollars an hour. You know, we've got to be able to be competitive with that too and be able to get good, you know, qualified people also. And we've, we've all gotta be starting to think about that. Everything has changed within a year as far as wages go. And, um, we've got qualified people, we've got to compete with that also, um, to be able to do that.
The other thing is, is unfortunately, we aren't gonna be able to chase inflation as fast as inflation's going up because of our, um, people out east.
Yeah.
We can do our best, but I don't think we're gonna be able to make a-
We're too Midwest, we're never gonna be able to do that, but we can at least try to help. I mean, I'm just buying groceries for two people and I'm surprised what my grocery bill is now.
I agree with Bruce though, I mean, we, we can't shoulder and bear the whole burden of inflation. I mean, it's just, it isn't, uh, you know, it is just a tough decision and, you know, it does change every year. You know, I think that, I, I don't, you know, I'm pretty sure the compensation board learned, they, they put thought into it. They will meet again next year, it isn't that we're set in for perpetuity forever.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm open to what you're saying, Sandy, I'm willing to compromise a little bit.
But, I mean, it, it just-
Somewhere you gotta be able to put something out on the table to at least start.
Well, that's why I said, I wanted this discussion, so, we're having a discussion, it, uh, you know, we, we got put in, got put in a difficult situation because we have to deal with the recommendations coming back from the compensation board, therefore we're dealing with them, there's no sense in kicking it down the road, but it's come up or something. But, you know, and I agree with Sandy too, I mean, yeah, we, like, have seen, you know, and even percentage across the board are more closely related where we weren't forced with cuts.
Right.
But honestly, uh, but, and I don't wanna make this a callous argument, but, you know, it's a, more, it's a good faith in that we should raise it a percent, you know, from three to four. Uh, but then, you know, we get the other percentage and the team goes up too.
Yeah.
We have a percentage to work with.
Yeah, we do.
We cannot just can choose.
Right.
I mean, that's, I'm, it's just a tough situation.
Yep.
It isn't, but we have compensation, but we're dealing with those numbers. They, and that's what they came up with and gave us, so.
As a plain devil's advocate, are you, are you just delaying it a year? I mean, if, if all the other counties are giving fifteen to twenty-five percent-
They're not.
Next year's, or, or whatever, I mean, if it's above-
That's, that's the thing, some of our neighboring counties are giving that ten, nine percent.
Okay. I'm just saying, next year's comp board recommendation, they're gonna look at the same surrounding counties?
Well, again, that's-
Are you just gonna, are you delaying it for another big raise next year?
You don't know.
We're hoping that the state's gonna do something with-
Well, there's legislation in that says the county board has to consider, uh, the county's budget when making their suggestions. It hasn't been passed, but it's sitting on the floor right now, it's gone through the first wave. So, then they check what the county sees to us, what they're getting for wages?
Yeah, we do, we know it's rising, so what you're getting.
You know.
And I know up north Hancock County, they're still on hire.
But from what we are told over here, they gotta do it because they can't hire anybody.
Well, you should do that, so I don't have to hire anybody.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that, Dean, I'm just telling you what the, that was right from one of the supervisors, that if they don't make a increase in what they're paying, they can't keep people there.
Do you guys know what I do during the day, or you just assume you know what I do?
Well, we, we got a pretty good idea, we do, you tell us.
Yeah, we-
So, I mean, I do a lot more than the State Patrol does. I mean, they're glorified ticket riders and they go out here and write tickets and stuff, or I gotta take care of the jail, I gotta take care of the civil process, I gotta maintain the sheriff's office and everything and dispatch and everything, so, I mean, I do a hell of a lot more than what state troopers do.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and they, after legislatures, I think they finally figured out that a sheriff's are underpaid for what, I mean, I'll compare my job duty to a, a police chief any day. I mean, we do a hell of a lot more than what you guys think we do. Yeah, I, I hate, uh, you know, if you guys do give me a, a big raise, I mean, I hate to, I have my deputies, but you guys are in the union negotiations now, so, you know, help them out a little bit.
Well, you also have to remember, we don't have a, a magic-
I understand that.
-bend of money either.
I understand that. But why should I be compared to a, a police chief in, in Iowa that's the same, uh, ten thousand people like we got? He gets a hundred and eighteen thousand and I sit down there at eighty some dollars. And I have a hell of a lot more responsibility than what he does.
We didn't have anything to do with setting up the parameters of how things are-
I understand that.
Are, uh, who we get compared to either.
Yep, I understand.
That's where the confusion comes in, there are a lot of numbers thrown out there through the compensation boards. It was very confusing, we were able to look at the numbers as well. It's, it put them in a difficult position.
I even had a sergeant from the State Patrol tell me, you know, basically we're just glorified ticket riders out here.
Well- Well, I don't get into the, yeah, beating that back and forth, but I think we need to come to a conclusion here with this discussion.
You know, and now we don't have an EMA director and I've been taking care of that for about a year now, so, without any compensation.
Well, yeah.
I guess it's in your hands.
We've had a lot of, lot of good discussion on that, um-
But I think you got, you got, you got really good employees in the country.
I know we do.
And cutting them back is gonna be a slap in our face.
Well, I know.
Did you ever anticipate that you would get an eighteen percent raise?
I figured it'd be something. I put twenty-five percent in when you guys told me to put something.
Did you know that before all the other stuff started around from another county?
No, I did not know that.
Have you ever got a twenty-five percent raise?
No.
I haven't either.
Or eighteen, that's, that's the thing, we, this, this is, this, the state, not really a mandate, because there's other counties that the sheriffs weren't getting twenty-five percent raises and so on and so forth. It, and every, the discussion is every county is different. Every county is different, Sandy made that in her opening remarks. We are humble and we are proud to be here, but we have to, you know, factor that in as well. So, I mean, it, uh, you know, and it's not all about one entity, 'cause that's a discussion too. Yeah, we like to be fair as possible, fair is a tough thing to do sometimes. But, you know, we're tasked with a lot of stuff and the overall thing is money. It's the biggest thing, you can drop nothing wrong, but I'm pretty sure to hear from your constituents, that's the biggest thing here, you know.
It, it comes down to that.
We have to do our due diligence in what we're faced with.
Right now, we, with Dave not being here, we have the ability to, we could end up in a tie.
Well, not really, 'cause you don't have to vote unless there's a tie.
Well, I know.
There you go.
I'm just saying, we could end up, I'm not saying that, but I'm voting anyway, I'm just throwing that at you. And, but she needs a date pretty soon here that we gotta put this in the paper, that we've come up with our numbers so that we can get this thing moving forward.
You know, I don't want you to think that we don't feel that you, you and your department is doing, you know, that you don't think so. We're, we're not saying that.
I know, it's, it's all the county board.
It's every, yeah, it's everybody, it's all the county employees. We are very blessed to have experts, county employees. I mean, I've heard, I didn't go this year speaking, but I've been at other meetings and they say that their departments don't get along, they don't get along with each other, and I, I really don't know of any of our departments that don't get along and that they don't, they all work hard, but, and so, I don't, I don't believe in, I, I don't feel comfortable with the fifty percent decrease. I, I would like to see it maybe at that thirty-three percent decrease, where it'd be at twelve point oh six or fourteen. I'm just throwing that out, but that's what I feel comfortable with. I would like to give everybody a little bit more of an increase.
Well, I, I have a feeling next year, it's gonna be another fairly large increase, just 'cause of inflation.
One's saying something we can't touch, but-
Right, right.
Can't control. And, and, you know, I'll just speak openly, I'm willing to bend a little.
I appreciate that. I think, I mean, we do need to get this working, we need to get Trish a number, we need to get our budget going, we need to get that done. We just need to make- And what the taxpayers need to realize, this is not something that we're, we have not discussed or have not care, I mean, we have, but, you know, we've also gotta think about our employees too. And we've gotta be, um, competitive with other-
I know, 'cause if we get, if we get too low, they can go up to, maybe over Wright or up to Hancock or up to Melissa Cusworth or Popee, you know, it's, it's a short drive.
Yep. And I don't want to start our employees, I just don't.
We have a motion on the table for a fifty percent cut, so unless someone's willing to rescind their motion or second.
Well, we can vote aye and turn it down and-
All right, so, you wanna vote on it? I'll call for the vote.
No.
Oh, do we have to? No, sorry.
All those, all those in-
I'm not always gonna say, I admit it.
All those in favor of the fifty percent cut, aye. Say aye. Pose same sign.
Aye. Guess we got that off the table.
Now we're off the table. Now, if you wanna make a motion for the numbers that you guys, Eric was down there-
Yep, I, you, I will, I'm not a CPA, I'll be the first to admit, but I come up with Sandy's number at, of thirty-three percent reduction, places the sheriffs at a twelve point oh six increase and the balance at a four point oh two.
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion for thirty-three percent reduction.
All right.
Off the board.
So, now we have a motion for a thirty-three percent reduction in the compensation's recommendation. Any other discussion?
I think we've had it.
I think we've had, talked over it pretty good.
All those in favor of that, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Can you get a second on his motion?
Sandy.
Sandy. Right after the early vote, she was, she was ready to hit it out there. So, do you have your numbers there, but-
Too much stuff going on on an early Monday morning.
I know, I just don't feel that.
Here's yours.
We're all trying to, what we gotta do.
I understand.
And then tonight, when we go up to, on the hill and get our backs laid to it because they think that their levy's gonna go-
Up.
We'll all remember that, so, anyway.
We'll have it.
That's the numbers that, uh, are fresh. All right, um, we review and approve the notice for the public hearing on the tax, property tax levy. Do you have a date that-
Um, yeah, it's the twenty eighth.
Do you have one of them calendars there? I did a new one.
Yep, I'll get one up here, please.
Okay, sorry, I was, I just left that calendar over there.
February twenty eighth.
February twenty eighth. And that gets us published in enough time. If we can get that in-
It has to be done by, what's the date? Fourth, fifteenth of March?
So, if we do it on February twenty eighth, what's the schedule? You just wanna shoot for like eight forty-five or eight fifty? We probably don't have anything in the-
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for eight forty-five, twenty eighth of February.
Second that.
We have a motion in the second to set February twenty eighth at eight forty-five for the public hearing on the proposed property tax levy. Any other discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries for the twenty eighth. Uh, discussion in action on bids received for the tree removal. Couple of weeks ago, we got-
Who are you?
She's with the C, C F R.
Okay, that's, I was wondering, sorry.
We can do that.
Eric, what are we, is that sort of our information here?
Yeah.
I know, but this, uh, yep.
You wanna come up, we'll slide you ahead and you can-
I gotta vote.
Get out of the, listen to all this grief. Should be the one with Kim's name on the top.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is just like Christmas.
I know. You should have seen me when I got all the socks and getting all the stuff in.
What is the, uh-
This is just goodies for-
Hey, oh, you got this?
Is this just the summary of what?
Yes.
What we get for our donation and our, being affiliated with the-
Yes, um, so basically the, um, state has went to, back in twenty nineteen, the Integrated Provider Network, and they've been really working on trying to train the prevention, the prevention workforce as well as doing the new utilization or the improved utilization of the strategic prevention framework. So, that basically is a data-driven framework to make decisions, just like you guys were just kinda doing. So, we did complete the tri-ethnic community readiness survey, um, as well as our other counties in our service area. And the priority areas that we discussed with people are adult prescription medication misuse, um, adult gambling, adult binge drinking, youth marijuana use and youth tobacco use. So, the readiness level kinda determines how ready you are to move forward and make changes to improve, um, on those issues. So, you guys, um, for Humboldt County, you guys went from denial or resistance to vague awareness. So, those readiness levels are relatively low. We have, um, the way that the readiness scale goes, it's no awareness, resistance or denial, and then vague awareness. So, one of the things that the state is trying to do is make sure that all of the prevention workforce is using the same information. So, they want to, providing us with, um, presentations, trainings and stuff that, that we have to present in their way. So, that is why we, um, are here to try to get some county money so that we can still provide resources to the different places for schools and that kinda fall out of that IPN workforce, um, plan that they have. So, um, basically we have a bunch of different trainings, um, but for you guys specifically, we do presentations for schools, um, so that doesn't fall under the IPN services that we can provide. So, um, the county money that we have gotten from you guys before, um, basically is to support staff time to do some of the things in the schools, um, some of the trainings that are kinda fall outside of the IPN, what we can do under the IPN, because they have become very strict and kinda restrictive on what we can do and what we can't do with their money. So, we also have, we have drug disposal bags, um, we have meloxone and overdose training, the North Central Iowa opioid task force, um, we do provide medication-assisted treatment and recovery support systems. We have a mental health first aid grant that is available, she can come and train anybody, um, for no cost. So, basically what we kinda did in the schools for Humboldt is we had- So basically what we kind of did in the schools for Humboldt is we had, um, presentation for opioids to middle school and high school students, um, as well as marijuana, um, tobacco and vaping, which vaping has become a huge issue, um, and then the Too Good For Drugs curriculum was completed for four sections of fourth grade. So basically the reason that we can't do that Too Good For Drugs under the IPN is because it is a research-based curriculum instead of an evidence-based curriculum. So they're getting very technical about how things are laid out.
Okay.
State of Iowa, ID page. Um, so basically if it's not research-based, we can't do it under the IPN. So a lot of the teachers in Humboldt like the Too Good For Drugs curriculum, um, and it is not quite as lengthy as the research-based or the evidence-based stuff, um, that we can provide, like life skills and stuff like that. But, um, they seem to really like it, they enjoy the program, they, um, like the information that we give them, you know, I mean, it is a good curriculum, it's just hasn't reached the level of evidence-based yet. So we can't provide it under there. So that's one, some of the things that we use the county money that we receive to do. Um, I know the, the middle school and high school, we did presentations just not too long ago, um, so that'd be in this fiscal year. But, um, we, uh, did it with the middle school and the high school on vaping and marijuana use because you can vape marijuana, which is adds a whole nother layer of, um, danger to our youth. Um, so basically, uh, you know, the principal reached out and said, you know, we're having a pretty big issue with vaping, can you come and do presentations to our students? So that just is one of the things that we, um, like to do and are able to do because of the county funding that you guys have given us. So we are requesting the same amount, the seventy-two hundred, um, for FY twenty-three. So some of our treatment services that are also utilized by Humboldt County residents are, um, you know, our main building is over in Fort Dodge. We do have, you know, the, the different levels, so we have a men's unit, a women's unit, and an adolescent unit. So right now we have twelve beds available, available for the men's unit, we have ten beds for the women's unit, and we have seven for withdrawal management, so that'd be like, um, basically they're, they're, um, stopping use of a substance.
Detox?
Yeah, detox, they go through that withdrawal, um, and when they're doing that, um, they really need to be monitored twenty-four seven. Um, we do have an onsite school for our adolescent unit.
Students?
Yes, correct. Uh, so it's really great, um, that we have all of these resources and we want to make sure that they're being utilized by all of our counties in our service area. So that chart that is on that last page of the pie chart, that just talks about our, um, treatment program admission. So, uh, most people are aware alcohol is the number one, uh, at forty-one percent, methamphetamine is thirty-three percent, and marijuana is seventeen percent. So, um, that, those are some of the areas that we're concentrating on. Um, and means vaping and tobacco use are such big things, they're, it's not going away. You know, we had a really big decrease in tobacco use with the Clean Air Act and all of that, um, but now that vaping has come out, um, we're having a resurgence. Um, so the point-of-sale summaries that are at the back of the packets, um, those kind of, I printed off the Iowa one for you guys and the Humboldt County one. So some of the things that we're doing well in Humboldt County is we are slightly higher to buy Juul Pod, so that's the, you know, little electronic cigarette device, um, but we are lower in some of the other, like actually buying cigarettes and, and that kind of thing. We are a little bit higher for, um, chew or, um, long-cut tobacco. The good things that we do have are exterior advertisements. Our rate for Humboldt County is not as high as the state, so that's great. Um, we're at twenty-nine, whereas the state average is forty-one percent. Um, for exterior ads for menthol cigarettes, we only have twenty-one percent and thirty-three percent for the state. And then, um, for electronic cigarettes, we only have seven percent and sixteen percent for the state. So those things we're doing well. Um, another thing that we're doing well is the interior advertising, um, ninety-three percent of the locations, so this is based on, um, seventeen retailers in Humboldt, and this, we had fourteen of them respond. So ninety-three percent have the signage that tells the minimum age, so that's great. Um, and then the re-card sign, um, we've got ninety-three compared to eighty-three for the state. And then on the back, um, it kind of talks about the price promotions. Um, we're actually doing really a lot better than the state. At the state level, there's forty-nine percent of retailers that, um, promote price reductions, um, and we only have twenty-one percent. And the one that we're kind of not as well, or not as good, is the e-cigarettes. The state is eleven percent and Humboldt County is twenty-one percent. Um, and then for the smokeless tobacco, the state's thirty-three and we're thirty-six. So those are just kind of some of the comparisons that we want to work on. Um, we are the holder of the tobacco grant now, so that's why I gave you the bags, those have quitline information in them. Um, so that is a really big push that we're trying to do to make sure that the awareness is raised, um, make sure that people are understanding that we do still have quitline. We do have a new one that's geared more towards teenagers, it's called My Life My Quit, um, so that talks more about vaping. Um, we did give that information to the schools on that, um, so we're really working to try to raise the awareness of these issues in Humboldt County so that we can make some changes. So that middle page that I kind of skipped over a little bit, that just kind of talks a little bit about some of the trainings that I can provide for free. Um, so we, I've done a lot of those trainings in Webster County, um, so I'm trying to expand it and do some other counties as well. Um, I'm going to be doing a trauma-informed care for first responders training for the Webster County Sheriff's Department, um, in March. So that would be something that I would love to do for your first responders as well. Um, so I would also like to ask if, um, you guys would put some of these flyers out, the quitline information in the courthouse, um, if that English and Spanish supports, um, so I'll leave those for you. And then do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, I like it that you're going into the, um, graders. I mean, the earlier, getting these kids educated and, um, aware of, of the, the betterment is.
Yes.
I'm really glad you're doing the, the earlier ad.
Yes, and with, at the state level, under the IPN, that's why we can't provide it under the IPN, is because they don't have that evidence base, they just have the research base for the fourth graders.
So does this take the place of DARE then? Or do they still do DARE?
I'm not sure if they do DARE.
I think they do. I think for a few years they have.
I wondered.
A lot of counties have stopped doing DARE, um, in the last couple of years, partly because of COVID. Um, the other part is that it kind of got revamped. You know, in the old days, when I went to school, the DARE program was just an officer coming in and talking to you and saying, say no to drugs.
Yeah.
So now they have actually revamped, revamped that DARE program and it's a lot more structured, so that is evidence-based. Um, we can't provide that, but an officer could get, um, trained in that.
So if I'm reading this pie chart correctly, it, they says based on twelve hundred and forty-four addiction treatments, that's in Humboldt County?
No, that's for CFR admissions.
Admissions, alright.
And those are unduplicated.
That's in their office in Fort Dodge, so it could have some Humboldt County people in it.
Yes, um, let's see here, where is that? I'm gonna say that that was somewhere on the sheet.
I thought it used to tell us how many.
Yes, okay, so.
They, they served, yeah.
So substance use disorder in FY twenty-one, Community Family Resources, served a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six individuals with four percent being from Humboldt County. Um, so that's just substance use disorder.
That was twenty-one?
And that was FY twenty-one.
So, and our numbers in Fort Dodge were cut back because of COVID, so we've only been running half.
Yes.
Capacity because we can't have the numbers in there.
Yes.
So that shows you what a sad.
Yes.
State.
Yes.
We're in, we're only in Humboldt, but the area.
There's other counties that are, that are, um, expressing these issues too. Um, for our mental health services, for FY twenty-one, we served a total of one thousand one hundred and eighty-five individuals with one percent being from Humboldt. So obviously we are not the only, um.
No.
Company or agency that handles mental health, but it is helpful that we do that with our campus and our outpatient services, just because if they come in with a substance use disorder, maybe that is primary, but then they have a secondary mental health issue that they need to deal with. So that, that's why, um, like the alcohol is the highest bill because we count the primary reason that they're coming in. So they may be primarily addicted to alcohol, but then they occasionally use methamphetamine or something, or marijuana. Um, so those could be the secondary issues.
Well, I'm on this board, so I get to listen to this, uh, every minute, but I know that.
And how large is the population base that this study is done in? You know, the population base.
Or Humboldt County?
Or almost of the CFR, I mean, there's a lot of population of.
Well, it encompasses eleven counties, doesn't it?
Um, for tobacco, we do eleven counties, for, um, substance use prevention, we do eight counties.
Eight?
Yep.
Okay, so varies.
Yes, the tobacco grant, um, we actually got a couple of counties that are outside of our service area.
I was just trying to get a grasp of percentage of people that use the service within the area, you know.
Yeah, so that is just our facility in Webster County, our, um, Fort Dodge location. We also have outpatient services here, um, one day a week, um, so we have a counselor come over and provide outpatient services. Um, but otherwise, if they do inpatient, of course, it's going to be in Fort Dodge.
Well, we appreciate you telling me.
No problem. Just let me know if you have any other questions, um, I'm happy to answer emails or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Hill, thanks for calling in, pin, pin and clip. It's big. And a little pad.
I want to be, ignore it.
What is that?
Oh, that's a stress one, it's like a little. We, we, I.
There you go, Eric, you'll like that.
I know, I use this, but I'm.
Don't give it to your grandchildren.
Well, I'm afraid I might eat it. Is that what this is?
Yeah, you, you pick it up. They can pick it up, it's a mess to clean up, trust me.
When it gets in your carpet.
That's what it does, I, I thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, heads up on that one.
Yeah, I'm, otherwise I would have been extremely perplexed about that.
Alright.
Yes, I'm.
Let's kill some trees.
Yes, let's get to the tree.
Or get rid of a dead tree, I should say.
We have, uh, two bids here, one from Kabala.
Kabali.
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 Uh, one removal of a spruce tree on the southeast section of the courthouse, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hollow away the debris, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars, so, um, total is four seventy-five.
Stump writing included.
I see that. For a total of four seventy-five and took tree service, remove pine tree in the southeast corner of the building and no stump removal, that's four hundred and eighty.
Well, it's a pretty easy decision, I'll make the motion to, uh, give him the bid to Kabali.
I'll second it.
I'll, my.
Well, I guess we'll both second it. With Sandy's approval, we'll second it.
And I think we need to let him know that we want it done before the ground thaws out.
Correct.
Yes, and I, while our tour, of course, was helpful with this and having talked to the both parties that came and looked, and, you know, they will look around, probably get the check for larger, you know.
Well, the way it looks, it's, that's what he's planning on doing, and then it says he will remove, uh, and bring back black dirt when ground thaws.
Yep, so.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to accept, uh, the bid from Kabali Tree Service for four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. So we got rid of a tree. Uh, approved Class C liquor license and outdoor service and Sunday sales for the Humboldt Country Club. See, is that, that's what that is? All the, I'm assuming all of the, uh, insurance, gram insurance stuff is in place? And I'm assuming that upstairs has looked at that and gave you a recommendation, that's all good? Okay?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to accept, um.
Class C?
Or approve the Class C liquor license.
For the country club.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Class C liquor license for the Humboldt Country Club. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Alright. I think Ben just, he was here.
He's just hanging out.
He tabled it.
Oh, okay.
So, when we were down Thursday, um, in Des Moines, we got some information that there's some money, um, is it available yet or it's going to be available?
I think there's some this year and some coming, more coming next year. Wait, I understood. Six hundred million this year and six hundred million next year.
So we got right on the phone because we were anxious to try to get our one ninety-ninth of whatever we can get.
Get our hat, hat thrown in the ring, I guess.
So, they're, uh, well, and we don't even, they're, the way that was explained to us was they're going to look at projects um, around the state and the projects that they like.
Yeah, they're, they're going to put a comedian together and, uh, go through them and pick some out that they like. So we're going to throw our.
So unfortunately Todd got a phone call that, can you, can you pull this off and?
Uh, this is a rough draft.
Well, that's what we asked for.
Friday. So you guys can.
Is this, uh?
Take it apart.
We got one for Dave, he would like to look at that.
I included Hettrick's request, our dam project, um, the Trail Connection in Webster County, which we've talked about in the past, and then I also included a trail paving project that we applied, uh, for great funding for, it would have been early summer, um, we did not receive that grant, oh, we had all the engineering, uh, estimates and all that stuff. So I thought that would be a good fit for something like this, but then it was bad, it seemed like the more shovel-ready projects were the ones that got the money, so if you don't want me to include that, I can de-read that, but.
I think that's a great thing because you have the information.
Correct.
And, and even our dam project does have a. And, and even our dam project does have a lot of.
Lots.
Lot of information already there, it's just like, oh, we wanna fix our dam.
Lots.
I see, you know.
And I included a lot of that, um, experience with that dam and the mission.
With that connection with Webster County, and I don't wanna interrupt you, but was that with, um, fine easements? Or is that like just adding along the shoulders? I mean, how do you?
And I, Ben and I have talked about this too. Um, our right way is not wide enough to accommodate people who didn't.
That's what I wondered.
You're gonna have to get an infrastructure company, owners along route. Hope goes well.
Well, I mean.
But that's, that's the direction.
Webster's, yeah, Webster's bringing it up to Badger, I think, in their most recent plan. Um, I think it's Paragon Avenue for them, it's Penn Avenue for us, or the Badger Blacktop. Uh, we've got narrow right-of-way as it is on that stretch of road. I think it's only, I know the north mile is only sixty-six foot wide. It's pretty tight, and then we got the.
Is that where it turns off of Thor Blacktop?
Yeah, where it turns off of Thor Blacktop. That first mile is only sixty-six, and then I think it widens, uh, might widen to eighty beyond that. There is one bridge on, on that stretch in our county, and I believe there's, there's one in Webster, two.
Yep.
Yeah, there would be.
But there's an old bridge.
That, that's sitting there, it's not, uh, it's not being used.
And they might be able to, you do bike traffic on that, but I think it's ways out in the farm field.
Yeah.
For that one. Um, but yeah, we, we talked about easement on the east side, weaving around those power poles that, uh, I think that American Owens.
Yeah.
So.
Okay?
Not as easy as just.
No, no.
Right.
But if it wasn't, but if it was easy, they'd all do it.
At some point, it doesn't have to be now, it could be that. If you see something that you think needs to be tweaked, add it, delete it. I mean, oh, I think you said, you have a few weeks to kinda get this finalized.
It sounded like it, yeah.
And I did reach out to Jamie Ashman, I haven't heard anything back from him yet.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll get some clarification. Because it just seems kinda crazy to me that they don't have a application for kind of standardized. Otherwise, it's gonna be inundated.
But you, that's what, that's what he called it, and he said, guy, you gotta get your Christmas list together and send it to us.
It does seem odd, but they're a little bit more somewhat regimented. Doesn't have to be super complicated, but you'd think you'd have a, per, because how many of these are they gonna get?
Well, they're gonna get one point two billion dollars, and they're gonna follow up that way.
But I mean, the, the request.
Oh, you know, every state county.
Every county, basically.
Every county's gonna solve it.
So, oh, ninety-nine.
We in a smart county would do it.
Well, I have a question, I mean, this is good stuff, Todd, especially on short notice.
I mean, it looks really good.
Well, my just general quest, general question is, you know, with, as Todd mentioned, possibly a few tweaks here and there, but could it be just submitted as these are the, if he states, uh, you know, priority projects, blocking funds? So there's not just four, but these three that are, you know, that you put in this pamphlet, submit them to him?
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair? Does it have to be nailed, does it have to, does it have to be narrowed down to just one?
No, I would submit all three of them today.
Yeah, or all. You know, because it is, it's all the same project, they can, you know, if we get part of it.
Or, I don't know, apparently, they don't have this overly specific, they said, send something in, we'll throw it in a pile or whatever. That doesn't sound very organized, so. I mean, that, what I'm saying is, if you put this, this is good information. Maybe they'll pick and choose and say, well, we can't get, uh, ten million dollars, but we could give, uh, two million dollars. Well, then you're gonna have, then maybe we have to.
Have to decide, yeah.
I agree.
I just think it's great to get it in there, and also, I don't.
Right now, Mark.
They say two weeks.
And Mark's fairly empty for what we're gonna use to do it, so if they put anything in it in reaction to our proposal, we, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Does, does Webster have to fly for about two miles up to the county line? To meet us, or are you running an elevator?
I, I think we talked to Matt last week a little bit about that, um, but I have not talked to him specifically since Rick called me on Thursday.
Was Bob the only one down there?
No, Mark, Mark was there.
Mark was there earlier, but I didn't see him.
Well, I mean, that is Webster's goal too. It's to get, get the two trail systems connected, they really want that bad.
Maybe they have a constructive conversation with him then.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think this is great, and that, I, yeah, that was the other thing I did, I did find out, yeah, last week, and Rick called in, two weeks, so they just all of a sudden make this, so the whole thing seemed to look at this jointed, if not, if not unorganized.
And I did kind of quick Google search, thinking there has to be more information somewhere about this, and I came on the MD.
Well, I think you've done everything great, you put together information very quickly.
That's the way I understood it, just not the way you understood it first.
That's the way I understood it.
And you reached out to Jamie Ashman to see about getting more information, or end, end, or?
Really, really fun this too, you know.
Yeah, at least find that out.
Right.
So I don't know what more we can do, Ben, thank you, Todd.
Well, I heard Jamie's, um, comment the other day. He told us, when he gave his phone number, um, I react a lot better to a phone call, because my emails are from top to bottom. I reply to, as they come in, I don't, and he says, I'm inundated with emails. So I would call him, yep. And just tell him that those thugs from Humboldt heard. Because we don't know who, we were trying to collar him on our way out the door to try to get one more earful of whatever we needed, and he just smiled, so. He's, he's pretty good to deal with, so.
He is a good guy.
I guess we appreciate the fact that, uh, on the phone call, you come up here on Monday after.
On notice.
Doing your homework, and we've got something, and hopefully we can at least get in the, the way I wanna be, it's part of the game.
Yep.
Yeah.
See where we end up. Yeah.
So I'm, I guess only to hear from Jamie for some more directions for us.
Yeah, if you don't hear from him in a day or two, call him again.
Yeah, I'll be shot. Um, but if you guys, like I said, do see something you wanna tweak and leave.
I don't think we got time to do a lot of tweaking, I mean, you've got the information.
And you know, like you say, we've got a lot of good hard information in here already. You know, it's not.
We have a project in the, uh, Gosh Trail Paving Project, he do the Webster County Connections early enough.
Yeah, it's early stage.
Have a lot of hardcore, near numbers to.
They can't be possibly looking for that, you know, that cell phone. You know, they'd be in the crib at X to make this.
What would, what would, uh, that trail cost be increased from the time they gave it to? I mean, how much have costs went up in, was that concrete, or was that asphalt?
That was concrete.
Concrete.
I think it hasn't jumped like steel.
Like steel, yeah. Because they already jumped, they didn't need to go higher.
Yeah, I mean.
They're already high enough.
A buck's a yard is what you're gonna pay, between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty bucks a yard right now.
Well, like you say, we'll see where we end up and.
No, thanks, Todd. Another thing too, we, you know, this is, this is separate of ARP money. This is this more generous donation from the state.
Yeah.
Still the federal, but that's their money, you know, built out of the counties for certain type of project. So then we've been having discussion on the ARP money. We did learn, that was another segment of our supervisors get together last week. Pretty much, I, it's like we're in this cartwatch, it's like, we're under, you know, all the, because we're a smaller county and popular with money and everything, here's your money. And, you know, we had great discussions, Andy's been involved, the departments have been involved. We've got these projects out there that also part of our conservation, not necessarily these, but other ones. And your other information and other things, I just thought maybe this appropriate time, we, we get that going. Because some of that stuff, that's not the multi-million dollar things, that's doable this year, we definitely don't want to drag our feet to say that, yep, move ahead with that on some of your other proposed work.
So have we officially adopted the committee's recommendation as far as what projects public county is funding?
We haven't officially done it, but, I mean, we, we need to get together at the committee again and just kinda prioritize. Pretty much, it's, everything that we've got on there is doable, that we can do, that we have, that we have on the email that we sent out there, but everybody got.
And are those numbers, are those the priority? Is that from top to bottom, or is that just shooting?
We were just putting, we were bringing something, everything we're putting down. It's really, well, we have a building on the top one, that's.
And when you do get together, you should probably put it more like, this can be done sooner than later, you know, on a timeframe.
Yes.
Table them out on a timeframe.
Because we could have, we gotta have our money now, and we gotta have come in April this year, or not, August. Wrong, wrong A month, August.
August, yeah. And it sounds like it's just, there are only a couple of things you can't do, and most other things you can do.
Right. We could just, um, they, they, the last final meeting said that the counties can put ten million into their loss revenue, um, so we can put all of ours into it, yeah.
So far, I would.
Yeah, we can put it all in loss revenue, and then so we don't really have to do resolutions for each.
There was two or three counties that did say, well, we are in excess of the ten million, I'm thinking, wow.
That would be a win-win.
But I'm. But we don't, it's, it's, don't do something we're not.
That would be nice.
We're still gonna do projects, but I don't want anybody to think we're not doing projects.
Right, well, you've done all the due diligence, and that's why I say this is a different, but it's somewhat similar, it's just money coming from a different area. But let's not forget that, and I think that's all good discussion. Prioritize it, because there's some of those things, and this is your, right? And then.
But that's, we could put all of it too much there. I thought it was a priority thing, I thought.
Todd's thinking this, he's got, he had twelve or fifteen projects listed in that initial packet he handed you guys.
Right, I got that.
Yeah.
If he knew that you guys were gonna approve six of those, he'd throw the other twelve in that packet, trying to get them all.
Well.
Well, maybe we need to.
Maybe I'm wrong, that's what I was.
I, I'm willing to do whatever you guys want me to do.
I don't know.
I just didn't know at what point am I okay to start to work on some of these projects?
So that's what my point was, because, not these, but those, yeah.
Right, at this point, I wasn't sure what you guys.
I wouldn't think too much later, because we don't have to be that specific, you know? Just don't do something that we're not supposed to, but we already had, Todd, you know, and you did a lot of work, and every department did a lot of work, Todd's always doing a lot of work, and it's just move forward.
The one she guys made is, your stuff coming in.
My calendar, why don't we?
Go back and, come back and give the recommendation again.
Tomorrow morning notes, how about you, Ben? First tomorrow morning, and tomorrow morning, can you just get ahold of the other ones that we had on there?
Then we've taken.
And so Andy, you had some good.
Nine?
Nine.
Nine, okay, let's say nine.
Well, I guess some of those were, you were bringing up we were building a building particularly, but, yeah, first it was more.
You talked to.
You had to do this, that, and the other thing now, it sounds like, fine, if you wanna spend the money on it, go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Number more, whether the colored buildings, the light tubes inside of that. Now it's not.
Now, we just, yeah, we don't have to worry about that.
But you got, you know, you guys and girls have gone through and done such preliminary work on that.
I'd like to see what the.
Such a language, I don't care now.
Insulated walls, like that church did out here.
Like the pre-engineered.
Yeah. I mean, those things come in and they just set those things in like eight or ten foot sections, you set them off, and then you have all the insulation and stuff that's on the church out there.
Or whatever.
The same way as that building up the high school, that they use a multiple.
There are houses, two houses at the, at that Sillings building, is that where?
In sections or?
Actually, it's coming wells, big long wells, boom, they're coming through all, set them up.
The people are done, the wells are, the outlets are done.
The one up there, in the five mil corner?
Well, that's eight?
They don't come sited, so.
No.
I just like to see. It's, it's up. They're working on the interior. People that are going to the church, I guess they're doing a lot of the work themselves, the way it sounded, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Sort of come back down there.
I think that with what he, he was just putting it up and, and Saturn's did the roof and, and siding, and they're inside now working, I think he's had some concrete work out there.
Might have right now, but.
Yeah. Alright, you guys, thank you. Appreciate it very much, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Todd, for throwing that together.
Alright, looks like we are towards the committee reports.
Okay. I have, the eighth Tuesday, I have IWD, WIOA Leadership Zoom meeting. Let me tell you, this IWD is really, um, so anyway, we're trying to get the state to agree to our local plans. They have accepted four local plans, but there's six of us that they have, they have not accepted. They want us to rewrite the whole thing, and we have put hours into this local plan as far as what we're gonna do for the disabilities, um, dislocated workers, you.
My niece.
And, uh, yeah, twelve, yeah. And then, um, that was a state one, and then Wednesday, we had a Zoom within our, all of our regions. It's the six of them, trying to figure out how we're moving forward and what we need to do. So that is tonight. And this is when I'm trying, yeah, the eighth and the ninth basically, because I, I didn't even have any. But we have to have this done by. The state keeps changing these lines again. That's it, that's all I had.
That was bad enough.
Yeah, it comes from the coast, so.
So, but, because, alright, and those days aren't real happy. That carbon map, or carbon pipeline, thank God we.
Yes, it.
Are brought.
Well, pipeline aside, uh, so officially, on Tuesday the eighth, I had a Public Safety Commission meeting, LEC Board, eight o'clock that morning. On Wednesday the ninth, at six o'clock, we had a full nine-one-one Service Board meeting here at the courthouse. Thursday, uh, Bruce, Rick and I spent the day at the statewide supervisors meeting at Embassy Suites in Devine, which we had touched base on, was actually quite, um, informative.
Yeah, a lot of good information.
Quite informative. On Friday, the eleventh, had a second judicial district meeting via Zoom that morning. Now, my official extra meetings last week.
Well, Trish, I had the LEC meeting on Tuesday at eight, and then on Thursday, I was out at ice rock all day.
And yes, he was.
Never, never nodded off.
No, he was attentive, one of them.
Yeah.
That is.
I see one guy took a good nap though.
They, they were commenting in the afternoon, everybody was really quiet for a while. Then it kinda fixed up towards the end there.
I think that was after the chicken dinner, and then everybody got a little rest.
Oh, it was gauzy.
I had, well, I went to the, uh, Embassy Suites on Thursday as well. Um, I guess that was it for me. This week is my fun week, so. Do you have anything else for us, Trish?
Nope. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
I'll second, I'll second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same signing. We are out at ten o'clock.
Trying to keep it on the hour, it worked.
Well, I had to look, because I thought he changed that clock.
Well, I don't know, I've locked it, all kinds of screwing around.